All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It's Wednesday, February 7, 2024, 9:02 a.m. My name is Ty Minter, Chair of the Board. We have on Zoom Vice Chair Commissioner Fournier and Commissioner Edwards in the room, and Commissioner Mahia on Zoom, and Commissioner Klaus's excuse for the morning session. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We're here for three hours to cover a variety of topics. We would likely take a break about halfway through that. First up is legislative update, and I believe it's Assistant County Manager Gelder that's going to give us an update.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Before you, as you know, I think I actually misspoke when we met on Monday because I didn't realize it was already the 5th of February. So the deadlines and the cutoffs are quickly happening. Last week, as we know, was the last day for bills to be considered in their policy committee, and then all the fiscal cutoffs were actually took place on Monday, the 5th. And then, of course, the House of Origin cutoff will be next Tuesday, the 13th. A couple of things I just wanted to bring you up to speed on. One is in front of you, and Commissioner Fournier and Mahia, we have copies for you here in the room, and apologize, I just got this from Deborah this morning, and that is wanting to reconfirm the board's support and use of the county logo on the Coalition regarding the RERAP Act, which was House Bill 2049.
Could we get that via email? I'm sorry, Rob, to interrupt.
Oh, certainly. I'll forward it to both.
Thank you.
It's on its way. So the question being that there is a proposal coming forward from Representative Phi that will basically roll back some of the intended goals for that bill of the RERAP Act, and the Coalition is looking for a more proactive stance of for the Coalition members to come out and urging again a vote on the bill as is and actively working against the potential floor amendment that might be coming forward. So she wanted to reconfirm the board's willingness to continue to actively part of that Coalition or amend sort of the position and go from there. So that was the first thing.
Just to clarify, now that I'm looking at Deborah's email, it sounds like she's she's wondering, she's uncomfortable or was questioning about whether we want to stay in the Coalition that's specifically opposing the amendment?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a little different than what I first read. Her email says, you know, do we want our county logo on the document which calls out the Fi amendment? So I guess just keep ourselves here would just be consistent with our previous position. It would just be taking the extra step of opposing that amendment.
Yeah, basically saying we still believe that the original version is what we support and gets the best impact relative to producer accountability. And personally, I don't think there's necessarily, this is just part of how the legislation unfolds. There's always going to be a floor amendment, and I don't think it necessarily coming out against a floor amendment is a bad thing if it changes the what the board has actually been supportive of.
It's the calling out of a specific member vote.
Yeah, I had thought that this was that it had got changed, like that his amendment was successful.
No, not yet.
The question is, do we still support what's left? And my answer is going to be no personally, but that hasn't happened yet. So I guess there's this question for the board.
Does Deborah feel that there's a chance of, I don't know, losing out on other support, on other issues because we're doing this?
I think that would ear point of caution.
And I have to say, it's that give and take of what do we have in jeopardy of other situations, you know? And so is it is it a big enough thing to go, what, basically out on Front Street, hold a sign and break windows or whatever? You know, I don't know if it is or not.
I think always the concerns, especially given the leadership role of Rep. Phi in relative to transportation funding, et cetera, probably would be would be the air of caution that she's.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so we put in for a grant or something and on a road project or something like that, or, you know, it could be in jeopardy.
We do have a significant ask on a road project.
I know. So I mean, do we do we want to jeopardize things?
That is the question.
That would be the concern. We are seeking full funding for the 507 bill.
So I'm kind of, let's see how it all goes. So I don't know if I'm in complete agreement with Ty or not on this particular issue. I don't want to jeopardize the bigger issue. Society will adjust things as time goes along.
Okay, well, we should probably just take a vote, I guess. Commissioner Fournier and/or Mahia, do you want to pull our logo off of this document or not? I do not. I mean, it sounds like Commissioner Edwards does.
Well, it's not on there yet, right?
It's on the back side. It's two-sided.
Do we need a decision today? I'm sorry, I'm like still processing all the information.
Appreciate that, Commissioner. Unfortunately, with the cutoffs looming, if there is to be floor action and the floor amendment come forward, there is just a short window of time in which to maintain that support or not. I've seen the schedule, this being on a floor calendar yet, though.
And I apologize again. Can can I just get like the pros and like pros of having the logo there besides what we've heard, right? And like cons of having it, like just?
That I would say that, you know, the pros of sort of is staying within the Coalition and advocating for the full extent of the original proposal in terms of the the product stewardship component of it. The the con really is, in this specific instance, is calling out Representative Phi's floor amendment and actively working against that in advance of it coming to the floor. And considering, are there other potential repercussions?
That's kind of what I was gonna, what's the con about, like, specifically doing this with Representative Phi as he's the chair of the transportation, like, is there going to be any lowback from that?
Correct. That's that is the question, and the potential speculation, we don't know.
You're still on the crab board, aren't you, Commissioner?
Yes. That's kind of why I'm just.
Well, I mean, he's, it's like, it's a subtle point, but we're not going after some piece of legislation that he's, you know, promulgating. Like, he's a ta, he's coming after a piece of legislation that we have favored, supported. We didn't know he was going to come after it, and, you know, he's doing what he feels like he needs to do, but I don't, to continue to support what we already supported before he had any role in it, to me, does not seem inflammatory or provocative. And there's a ton of, you know, people in this Coalition, including Spokane and Olympia and Washington Association of Washington Cities and both of our local healthcare unions and every environmental group on in the state, basically. Some of the labor building construction unions. So to me, King County, Port of Seattle, ISQua, Bellevue, I mean, to me, I think, I don't feel like we're going to get called out. We're in pretty safe cover in this very, very broad, diverse Coalition.
I guess from my perspective, I don't know if any of these folks are trying to get funding for a project that's been delayed, and we're pretty small potatoes when it comes to whether or not our support is going to affect this or not. Just why poke, why poke the guy who's at, you know, why poke the bear, so to speak, that does have some financing, say, about how our projects may or may not proceed? That's all.
My answer as to why is that this is much more consequential for our community than a few transportation dollars in the long, in the long run. But Commissioner Fournier, go ahead.
If we maintain the position we've had, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to battle against his amendment, does it? I mean, we can just, you know, just subtly maintain our position and not take up arms against his amendment, right?
It's not necessarily, you know, taking up arms per se, but it is urging, the Coalition is urging that the legislators, as it comes to the floor, to vote yes on the act as it's currently stands and to vote no on the proposed amendments.
Thank you.
I don't think it's going to affect one thing or the other because I think I know where our legislative body is, and that's not going to change. They're going to stick to their guns, basically.
I think, you know, Deborah was, it's was asking out of an abundance of caution, just wanting to make sure.
No, no, it's reasonable, and I, whatever the board wants to do, it's it's the democratic process. I'm not, you know, I just like to, if we can put, if we could vote on it at the end of the meeting, if folks like, like to think about it for the next couple of hours and.
Sure, I can.
Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, we'll take this one and back up.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yeah.
Chair, you know, is there any confirmation that the rest of the signers have confirmed their name on it, right? Are they all good to go? Or are they all also being asked the same question that Rob is asking us, and everyone could drop off in the first county on the letter?
No, I can definitely ask Deborah if she's aware of any other jurisdictions or groups that are pulling back. And I'll try to get a response from her before the end of the meeting and bring that back for your consideration.
Thank you. I think that would be, I think it's, it's good to ask, right? Just because maybe our cover is dropping off the letter, and maybe it's Spokane County and Seattle or whoever else is dropping their, you know, I think we should, we should know or they're just waiting for us to confirm.
Okay, I will make a quick inquiry and hopefully get a response before the end of the meeting. Quickly jumping into the remainder of the briefing, just wanted to provide you a brief update since this was, I pulled this together on Sunday. There was an attachment of the updated version four of the NC, NCS proviso request for 34 million. You'll you'll note the kind of the biggest change in the middle of the document is the amount of acres have shifted down for Capitol State Forest to 325 acres. That's probably the biggest change there, but we'll still see whether or not it has any attraction as part of the capital budget by the end of the session. So we'll continue to monitor that, but I wanted to call that out to your attention. As I mentioned briefly yesterday, we had some good luck on our flexibility for the Board of Health, that the Senate Bill 5970 passed the Senate unanimously, and Deborah is actively working on trying to get the floor vote for the House version as well. That will just, it's the exact same doc, same bill, so hopefully it will just ease that that process moving forward because we won't need concurrents in that regard. The next one to, since updating since the last time was on page three, the 1892. That specifically was a program to be created within the Department of Commerce, under which loans may be issued to eligible organizations to assist with the development of housing for low-income households. That has been, just want to update on the 5th, on Monday, that was referred to rules. And I really need to put page numbers on this at some point in time. That's the hard part with Excel. Under housing, other bills of interest, housing, land use and zoning, Senate Bill 5792, that did pass the Senate unanimously, 49 to 0, and that is an exemption of buildings with 12 or fewer units that are no more than three stories from being categorized as multifamily. So that definitely changes the landscape and would have an impact as to how we review those types of projects when they come into the Building Development Center. Below that, 5834, this was the UGA Flexibility Bill that was proposed by Senator Short. That did also pass the Senate yesterday on a unanimous vote, 49 0. And then below that, Senate Bill 6150 also passed unanimously from the Senate, and that would give us a little bit more time, another six months for the completion of our periodic update for our comprehensive plan. And last but not least, on the very last page, are the bill that we are supportive of and which provides local governments a flexibility when the, relative to the exemption of lodging businesses or units or guests from those charges, and that gets back to our whole tourism promotion area, et cetera. This fix would allow us to not have to amend our local code. Currently, the House bill is in rules. That's the the latest update. The Senate has, was placed on the the floor calendar over the weekend or the end of last week, but it has not come to a floor vote yet. And that is the latest and greatest and changing hourly minute, every minute by minute.
How's the WOE bill doing, you know?
I have not seen any new update on that one.
77 about the tax, about the tax.
Those are not moving. That's, as stated, I keep checking that one. It's in the Ways and Means. Likely, it will be NTIB, so necessary to implement the budget. If it's taken up at all, it'll come back at the very end during the budget process. There are several bills that are languishing, and whether or not they have a fiscal impact, they could be resurrected as part of that process.
If you could ask Deborah about that WOE bill, just, it's, if that's not going to go anywhere, then I've got issues to address at next week's Building Code Council meeting.
Which one?
It's the one that, it starts with a 6. I can't remember the number, 622 or something? 6020, and it basically fixes the concerns that we, that we, a lot of jurisdictions had, like Tom Water was leading for the Association of Washington Cities, about the Wildlife Urban Interface Code, and that the mapping was inaccurate way overbroad, and the defensive space requirements were way overbroad, and it was going to result in huge loss of tree canopy that was completely unnecessary. Everybody was supporting this. I mean, the actually, the sponsors are Republicans, and even on the Building Code Council, which doesn't agree on a lot of issues, there was overwhelming support. And so we, we're taking up some amendments to this next week, but this legislation would kind of override that and kind of fix it for us, so to speak. So I'm just trying, trying to track that so that I can know how much to prepare for next week's Building Code Council discussion.
I can track that down with Deborah. 6020 isn't the bill number.
6120.
6120?
That makes more sense.
So that is on the the Senate floor calendar, so it has the potential, it obviously needs to pass by next Tuesday, the floor of the Senate. But I will keep in touch with Deborah on that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, any other questions for Rob on legislative items? Okay, thank you. Next up this morning is Bond Issuance Informational or Bond 101. I'll look to the interim county manager to set stuff up.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. And I would like to introduce our guests today. Yep, come on, Stacey Yamaki from Foster Garvey, and Duncan Brown from PFM, are longtime supporters, bond advisor and bond counsel. Good morning. They are here for what is essentially a overview of how bonds work in local government, specifically tax-exempt general obligation bonds, which is what the county tends to use. And we are preparing, as you know, to issue bonds to support two capital projects in Thurston County. First, a new facility for the sheriff, and second, the Elections Center for the Auditor's Office. So as we get ready to go out and issue bonds, we wanted the Board of County Commissioners to have the latest information on where we're at as a county and how all of this works, and to have an opportunity to ask questions of the experts. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Duncan and Stacey.
Thanks, Robin, and good morning, Commissioners. It's great to be here again, although I think the last time, few times we've done this, it's been elsewhere, but here in Thurston County. Some of this may be familiar. I think we encourage questions along the way, if there are any, but as Robin mentioned, we're just here to kind of give the lay of the land for how the county issues debt, talk a little bit about how counties in Washington issue debt generally, debt policy, how the optimization of debt works, outstanding series of debt, and its current credit rating, talk a little bit about the legal framework for issuing, issuing bonds, and then briefly touch on the proposed 2024 bond issue that Robin alluded to as well. Maybe we, should we start with introductions? Re-introductions, Stacey, if you want?
So I'm Stacey Yamazaki. I'm with Foster Garvey, and we are the County's Bond Counsel. I've been working with the county and Robin for over a decade now, and I also help work with other counties, cities, the state of Washington, special districts, including public utility districts and public hospital districts on their bond financings.
And I'm Duncan Brown. I'm with a different firm. We're with PFM, which used to stand for something, and now it's just three letters, PFM. And we are a financial advisor. I work primarily with counties, cities, special districts in Washington and Oregon, which is most of our county clients. We provide recommendations with respect to the structuring of debt, how the, how bonds are sold, sort of handle some of the administrative processes that are required to actually get from start to finish in a, in a transaction. We're not a bank. We have a fiduciary responsibility to the county and to each of our clients.
So let's just go the rest of the way around the table so you meet everyone that's here.
I'm Jennifer Smith, and I'm in the Budget Office, and I've been putting off learning about bonds as long as I can. I've been dragged, kicking and screaming.
Nicole Martinez, Budget and Fiscal Manager.
Rob Gelder, Assistant County Manager.
Ty Minter, Chair of the Board.
Terry Edwards, County Commissioner. Could I ask Stacy a question? You are our legal.
Carolina, oh, sorry.
Let's finish introductions. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry, Carolina Mahia, Thurston County Commissioner.
Wayne Fournier, Thurston County Commissioner.
I'm Robin Campbell. I'm currently the interim county manager, but hopefully soon back to my normal Assistant County Manager role.
Aiken Porter in the Pedal for Information.
Matt Brownsley, I'm executive aide for Commissioner Fournier.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Thomasina Cooper. I work with Commissioner Minter.
And also, good morning, Taylor Rome. I work for Carolina Mahia.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So you're our legal representative, representative, been sworn in by John Toonheim to cover our legal advice on bond issues. Is that the way it works? Yeah, okay. That question got raised one time, so I thought.
Yeah, and you may remember Nancy Aaron's.
Yes, same thing.
She, she has retired.
Oh, she has, okay.
And I worked with her, she was my mentor for maybe a couple decades. So I've been, again, working with Nancy and the county for.
Thank you.
Nancy was excellent. I worked with her on a couple of bond issues, and I really liked her.
Yep.
And I think it was kind of on the periphery of your bond issue as well.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, when you're.
Stacy's always been kind of in the background a little bit, stepping up more and more the last few years, and we're very happy to have her on board as part of the team.
And it's part of what I didn't mention, is so as bond counsel, we draft all kind of documentation, so authorizing resolutions that will go before the board to approve or not approve going forward with the bond issue. That's kind of our role. We also look at federal tax law and see if your bonds can be issued on a tax exempt basis, and then we render our opinion that the bonds are valid and whether or not they are subject to federal tax exemption.
And you probably had some involvement in the resolution that we passed last year on this issue, I suppose, right?
Correct. And again, our legal opinion provides assurance to the issuer and to investors. So again, rating agencies, insurers, underwriters, again, all ultimately for the benefit of the investors, that all legal and tax requirements have been met. And then there is obviously an attorney-client purpose between the issuer and bond counsel.
And Stacy mentioned a couple of the other parties in a bond transaction, and I'm actually going to back up a couple of slides here, just to describe. We won't get too much into the detail here, but on page three, there's a list of the participants in a typical bond transaction. We mentioned bond counsel. You have your financial advisor. We're the only two that really have any regulatory or legal responsibilities to. that really have any regulatory or legal responsibilities to the, to the county. Pretty much everybody else is on, is an arm's length service provider. And that includes an underwriting firm, which purchases the bonds and sells them to investors in a, in a typical publicly offered bond sale. In recent years, the county has also, on occasion, sold debt directly to commercial banks, which is not listed here, but that's another possible participant is a commercial bank can just buy the bonds directly. Bond rating agency, and we'll talk a little bit about, later on, about what, how that works. Typically, that's been S and P, what used to be Standard and Poor's, and the state fiscal agent, US Bank, is involved. They're the ones who actually take money from the, receive money from the county and pay it to bondholders. And there are some others that, that get involved in certain types of transactions, but that's a little less common. So I'll get back on, on track here, and we'll talk a little bit about what is municipal financing? What are municipal bonds?
So it is borrowing by governmental entities. A security, a bond is a security instrument issued by governmental issuers evidencing the issuer's obligation to repay borrowed money. Typically, it's thought of as tax-exempt debt, but can also issue on a taxable basis. And then what does tax exemption mean for the county? So it means that investors or purchasers of these bonds do not have to pay federal income tax on the interest earned on those bonds, and therefore usually willing to accept a lower interest rate. There was a time where taxable interest rates and tax-exempt interest rates were pretty close, but typically, tax-exempt interest rates are lower than interest rates on taxable bonds.
In, in the current market, that's at, you know, typically about one or more percent. As Stacy mentioned, when rates get very low, that, that spread narrows. But generally, there's, there's a pretty decent, pretty decent savings to the borrower by being able to issue on a tax-exempt basis.
And then obviously, there are lots of regulations and requirements, so we look to federal law. So federal tax law, federal securities law, state law, so state constitutions, statutes. Those will let us know what are allowable purposes that you can issue bonds for, and the amount of debt you can issue. And then obviously, local laws, in case there's any specific requirements relating to the county in this case. Some common financing methods, as Duncan mentioned before, usually you, the county's bonds are sold through the public bond market, through a competitive sale. But as he also mentioned, you could also sell your bonds directly to a bank, and that is not necessarily sold on the secondary market. Also kind of called a private placement. There's seller-vendor financing, the locals program, local option capital asset lending, or state and federal, various state and federal loans.
And there, there are, there's a lot of different terminology here, loans, bonds, notes, different loan programs. For most purposes, they're all debt. They're all borrowed money. Some of these things, you know, state loans, federal loans, don't have, they aren't necessarily governed by the same securities laws that a publicly offered bond issue is, but they would still be considered debt of the county. They'd still require board authorization. So it's, it's sort of just a different flavor of borrowed money. Maybe that's too reductive, Stacy, but that's how I think about it.
But we'll still have to do the tax analysis. We'll still have to give a legal opinion. But maybe less work, again, for Robin and Nicole and the county, if it's sold by a private placement. So debt issuance by Washington counties, so again, state law governs the types of debt and most terms of the debt. So there's several types of options of debt, and one is general obligation debt, which the county has, and it's secured by the full faith and credit of the county, payable from property taxes and other legally available funds, and maybe in the form of non-voted general obligation debt. And again, as Duncan mentioned, we have a lot of acronyms, a lot of different ways we say the same thing. But non-voted general obligation debt is also called limited tax general obligations, or LTGO. And that requires approval, obviously, by the Board of County Commissioners, but no vote from the electorate. And then there's also voted general obligation debt, also called, known as unlimited tax general obligations, or UTGO. And that does require a forty percent turnout of the voters from the last general election and a sixty percent approval.
So let's pause there for a moment, because this is an area where we get a lot of questions or comments. Non-voted is called limited because it does not change the amount of property tax that the Board collects, and has to fit within the levy if the source of payment is within, is coming from the general fund, property taxes, and, or, or whatever fund that we're paying it from. We're not necessarily changing our revenue with non-voted, although you could go to voters and ask, for example, for a levy lid lift. But the part of that that's limited is you're limited to the capacity within the property tax ceiling. Unlimited goes to the voters, and it's what we generally see for schools. Schools are an excellent example of unlimited debt, and it's unlimited because it's in addition to whatever the property tax revenues is for that entity, and can go above the tax limit. So it's unlimited. And that's just one way to think about it, and it requires not only going to a vote, but a sixty percent approval.
So one of the things that you said was it requires forty percent of the electorate, so-
From the last general election.
From the last general election, okay. So if a hundred thousand people voted last election, forty thousand people would have to vote on that, and then sixty percent of that would have to be, okay.
It, it's, it's a high threshold.
Yeah, right. It's very high.
I wish your Forney, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I think Robin answered most of it, but like with the limited government bond, there's, there's a ceiling for how much you can ask, right? And it's, it's, it's typically a much, like, lower amount when you're doing projects and things like that. So I, I, what, do we have any idea yet what that ceiling is for, you know, these projects that we're considering?
So, so we'll get to a slide that has the debt ceiling. Hang on to that question. It's an excellent question. The debt ceiling does not apply to how much the Board could authorize. Really, what you're limited by is the amount that you can afford to pay. So we'll, we'll get to more of the use case in these slides.
Oh, I thought there was a calculation based on this total assessed value, and then your-
Yeah, we're gonna get to that in just a few slides.
There is, but you'll never get it. Never understand.
We can't afford it.
The numbers I'm used to are much lower.
Yeah.
And I guess I, I would, you do occasionally see unlimited tax GO bonds issued by counties, but by far the most common form of financing for counties in Washington is limited tax general obligation debt payable from REIT, sales tax, the regular levy, some other existing revenue stream. That's the most common type of debt.
Oh, no. And again, we'll talk about the capacity that you are allowed to issue a little bit later. The county is also able to issue revenue debt, which is payable from the revenues of a particular utility or enterprise, so like water, sewer, stormwater. There's no statutory limit on how much debt of a utility you can issue, but obviously, there's a practical one. You know, how much can your rates actually pay? Or how much you can increase rates to, in order to pay your debt service? And then there's also assessment debt, so local improvement districts, LIDs, or road improvement districts, RIDs. And those are payable from assessments from, assessments levied against the property benefiting from these special improvements.
So I, I mentioned the county's debt policy. Current policy was reviewed and adopted a year ago. Counties are required by statute to, to have a debt policy. And, and the most recent version was also, I would note, submitted and certified by the Washington Public Treasurers Association. So it's got that stamp.
Is that all done through the Treasurer's office?
It is, yes.
In the Finance Committee.
Commissioner Mahia would have been. It's the chair that sits on that.
It's your turn this year.
It's my turn this year, but they said the debt policy was issued last year.
It, it is required to be reviewed and updated at least once every four years. But typically, when we review it, we try to, try, try to make sure it's gonna be good for at least a few. It, it authorizes the types of debt Stacy just mentioned. It describes the manner in which debt will be sold. The county, like many issuers, has a preference for a competitive sale of bonds, which means you, you basically sell bonds to whoever will, whichever bank will, will give you the lowest interest rate. It puts some bounds around how debt can be used. Generally, it must be used for capital purposes and align with the useful life of the asset being financed.
Which is also kind of limited, or governed by tax law as well.
And importantly, prior to issuing debt, the county will identify the anticipated source of repayment and evaluate the sufficiency of that source, because that is really, the affordability is, is, is the limiting factor on, on the, the amount of debt and the ability of the county to issue that debt. There are some, some policy targets around refinancing of debt. The county has, has refinanced many of its bonds in recent years for interest rate savings when rates were a bit lower. And there are also some, some provisions in that policy regarding what happens after the bonds are sold and how the county will comply with some of the federal tax and securities laws that Stacy will talk about a bit later. It's not just a, it's, it's something that has to be managed for the life of the debt. It's not necessarily something that is sold and then forgotten about.
So we do have, even when the county's not issuing debt, we do have, you know, emails with Robin or discussions with Robin or others about questions that might come up about debt that's previously been issued, and that's kind of what we're, both Duncan and I are here for.
This is you.
So back in 2011, the statutes were amended to provide an option for a bond resolution to delegate certain authority for bond issuance to a designated representative. And the county has used this method, so a delegation resolution, since about its 2015 bond issue. So in the bond resolution, before this was passed, we would have to have a bond sale around a county commission meeting date, so that once we had the final terms, then the commission would authorize it. In this case, now we have that flexibility. So now we can have the Board approve a bond resolution ahead of time within certain parameters, such as those listed here, you know, a maximum not to exceed principal amount, maximum interest rate or true interest cost, a final maturity date, and the date by when bonds must be issued or can be issued under that resolution. And then also describes the uses of the bond proceeds. If it's a refunding, any potential candidates to be refunded. And again, having it done at a board meeting that's not on the sale date gives us the flexibility, as Duncan can mention, you know, on when it might be best to be in the market to sell those bonds to get the best interest rates for, for the county.
Yeah, I mean, this is almost not really new anymore. We've been doing this for over a decade. But prior to this, this, this change, you were not only limited in terms of when the bonds could be sold, but it was also a bit of a false choice, because you'd kind of accept bids. The, the, the offering documents would, would indicate that you would accept the lowest interest rate on those bids. And so when it came to the, to the Board of County Commissioners for approval, you know, there wasn't really a good way, there wasn't a good reason to say no, and, and if you, and if the Board did say no, it would have reputational issues for the next bond sale. So it was a bit of a false, there wasn't really any benefit to that, to that approach.
And what we had to do, because I remember doing this, is early on a Tuesday morning, we would do the bond sale, get the bids, figure out which one the winning bid was, and then these folks would rush to prepare the documents to be on that Tuesday afternoon board meeting for final approval by the Board. This way, what we've been doing for, since 2015, is the Board delegates to me the authority to issue the bonds when the time's right, within definite parameters. So when we're getting ready to go to the bond sale, I tell Commissioners, all right, we're, we're going out now. Make sure that, you know, nothing's changed in the will of the Board, and then we're able to process it in a much more rational way.
We're not gonna get in trouble for inside trading, because you're tipping us off.
No. It's still, it's, it's funny, it's a funny little process, because I've been part of this a few times now. And you sit in a room and you watch a screen as the bids start to come in. There's this little window of time, maybe half an hour, and all the bids come in like the last three minutes.
Sometimes the last three seconds.
Yeah. So it's an interesting process.
And for tax purposes, we always like, as soon as we get three, we're like, okay, great. It's kind of a safe harbor tactic issue. And again, you know, Robin has been the designated representative for the county with the bond issues for the last, you know, again, since we've been doing this. But we also have a backup in case for some reason Robin is not available. And that's typically been the treasurer, the county treasurer.
So I'll just give a brief overview of the county's existing debt. As, as, we hammered on a couple of times already, the county only has limited tax general obligation bonds outstanding. There's a list of them here. They've been issued for a variety of purposes. In many cases, they were issued for multiple purposes, and are payable from a variety of, of different, of different sources. There, one thing we do pay attention to is the call dates to monitor for refunding opportunities. The next refunding opportunity that the county will, may have, would probably be next, next fiscal year in connection with the 2016 bonds, which become callable in December of 2015. Unlike a home mortgage, which can be refinanced at any time, most bond issues hit their call date at year ten. That's just sort of a market convention. And prior to year ten, it's typically, for a variety of reasons, expensive and not, not worthwhile to refinance unless there's some other, some other factors at play. But for interest rate savings, we typically look to that call date to, to help guide us. A make whole, that's a great question. A make whole call basically means if rates have, if rates have fallen, so the investor would be redeploy, would be, have their, their investment extinguished, and they'd have to redeploy that, that money elsewhere at a lower rate, then you have to make them whole for the decline in their return. And basically, what it means is, yes, you can refund those, those bonds if you need to, but if you're trying to do so because rates have fallen, you're gonna pay a penalty to the holder of those bonds. And so it ends up not being cost-effective. It's, it's something we typically see with taxable bonds, not tax-exempt, and that's actually why those, the 2010 bonds were issued on a taxable basis, which is why they have that.
And typically, again, with your other debt, so like the 2016, that has call date next year, it's without penalty, so it's just refundable at par.
And the 2010 bonds are a bit of an odd duck. They were issued, that, that five and a half percent rate is actually, there's a seventy percent, I think, subsidy attached to it from the US Treasury. They were issued under some provisions of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. So not only would it be challenging to refinance those, but it's unlikely that, that, because of that subsidy, that rates could ever be low enough to make it worthwhile anyway. And they're payable, they, they have final maturity, just a few years, so, so they're probably not an ideal candidate for, for multiple reasons. This is just a graphical representation of the county's annual debt service requirements, color-coded by series. Again, some of these series have multiple projects with- Again, some of these series have multiple projects within them and they are payable from a variety of sources. So I'm not sure exactly how useful seeing everything kind of smushed together is, but it does give you a sense that, that the bulk of the county's debt is concentrated in the next few, you know, the next six years, which is a credit positive, that rapid amortization.
And so this is the one that I think we kind of touched on before. So there is a limit as to how much general obligation debt the county can issue. And it is based off of the county's assessed valuation for that year. Non-voted, so the LTGO, limited tax general obligation bonds, may not exceed 1.5% of the assessed value of the property in the county for that year. So if you're issuing bonds in 2024, we look at our assessed valuation from 2024, which is what this table is. And then total debt, so non-voted and voted, may not exceed 2.5% of the assessed value of the property in the county. So again, your assessed valuation for 2024 is about almost $60 billion. And so your 1.5%, your limited tax general obligation debt capacity is almost $900 million. And currently, so this non, outstanding non-voted general obligation debt is about $83.9 million. That also includes your state loans that are payable from property taxes. So you have about 90% remaining of your debt capacity for non-voted debt remaining. So you, I mean, technically you could issue another $815 million of bonds, but practically.
No, you can't. You really can't. So Commissioner Fournier, does this answer your questions or do you have?
Yeah, yeah. I move we issue $800 million.
Yeah, just give me authority to do that.
Three courthouses.
Yeah. And then again, obviously 2.5%. So if you had any voted, or you were thinking about going with voted debt, you have a bigger debt capacity. And currently, again, that's about 94% remaining.
But the voted one has to remain within the property tax levy limit?
Okay, can it? No, the voted one can go above the limit. So it's, that's what makes it appealing. It's got a built-in funding stream. Property tax would be dedicated. And then Thurston County has the unique authority to pay for capital projects with the, the type of debt for, oh no, you can do it with a levy lift for 25 years. So that's a little different. But the, they want you to go for voted debt for the big long-term projects.
Yeah, I mean, this, this, every, every taxing district that has the authority to issue debt has some form of this limit. And for some of them, it's very meaningful. For counties, it's almost never meaningful, just because the tax base is so large to the financing needs.
Commissioner Fournier?
So then the, the big discussion is, is the revenue stream that's associated with the, whichever debt you're going to issue?
Yes.
And for the, for the councilmatic one, you've got to identify a revenue source? Is that, is that, I heard that correctly, right?
Yes, you, you need to figure out how you're going to pay the debt.
And for us, there's currently a question as to whether the public, public safety sales tax qualifies. Is this question, has this question been answered? If the public safety sales tax qualifies as revenue that can be associated with a, with a limited government bond?
So I have not had an opportunity yet to talk to Darren, but I believe that it is legal to use the public safety sales tax. We specifically, in the resolution, stated that we would be using the money to pay for two facilities. And if we were to wait until there was just enough money to buy the facilities or pay for the projects, we would be waiting years for that money to accumulate in the fund.
Yeah.
So it only makes sense to issue bonds and do the bond payments out of that fund.
I thought it said elections and then sheriff, it says associated infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yeah.
It's not clear.
It doesn't really make it clear.
It doesn't specifically say facilities, but infrastructure is, I mean.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, that's the phraseology and it's not that, it's not two buildings. It's, that's very open-ended.
True, that is absolutely true.
It's not clear it means a building and it's not clear it's one building. It's very, very vague.
And, and there's, there's nothing in law that like marks this type of revenue as different than all other types of revenue, right?
No, there, there are some state laws on funds that specifically say you can bond against this fund. And then there are others where it's implied, if you will. And certain funds are restricted, but that particular one is silent on the, you know, can or can't.
And then since these bonds would be limited tax general obligation bonds, if that revenue stream was not sufficient to pay the debt service on the bonds, the county's property taxes would have to cover.
General fund, right.
Although I would note in our early analysis, I think it's expected to be sufficient several times over.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's per the, per the county, for the debt policy. So I'll just talk briefly about credit ratings and the county's credit rating specifically. Just like, you know, getting a home loan and your lender looks at your personal credit score. Anytime a local government issues debt in the public bond market, investors will typically look for one or more credit ratings. These, these are relied on by the underwriting firms that bid on the bonds as well as the, the investors to whom they ultimately sell the bonds. And they look at a variety of different factors to, to make their determination. Some of these factors are within the county's control, others are not. And so I, I always try to encourage folks to look at these with a grain of salt because not everything, not everything is, is necessarily a judgment. It's, sometimes it's, it's out of, out of our control. Unlike personal credit scores, which are simply numeric, these are, the digital credit ratings are typically expressed alpha numerically. S and P, which is, again, the rating agency that the county primarily uses, assigns AAA, double A, single A, triple B, so on. They also provide plus and minus indicators. So within the double A category, there's double A plus, double A, double A minus, then down to si, single A plus, single A flat, single A minus, and so on. About 15, 18 months ago, the county actually received an upgrade to its credit rating, to double A plus. So it is currently the, the second highest rating that's available. I think that's actually, it's the same rating that the federal government has. And you can see the, the strengths and some of the feedback here summarized. You know, as, I expect we would, we would go back to S and P in connection with the proposed 2024 bond issue as well.
We would. And, and I got to say that the last rating conversation was a little bit exciting because they were actually considering whether or not the county would qualify for triple A, which would have been phenomenal. But, but we missed it by this much and the conversation with the raider was they want to see if we can maintain our financial stability over time.
Any questions on credit before we go into tax law?
Very high level. And so my firm does have two tax attorneys that specialize in just municipal financing. So again, I'll have, Phil Talkin has been on the county's deals for a while. And so we've asked, you know, he's always on board. We talk early and often about kind of what the county expects to use the bond proceeds for. And as mentioned before, that's kind of helps determine whether or not we can issue tax exempt debt or taxable debt. Or if we're unsure, then do we need that flexibility at the time? So long ago, again, Congress exempted interest on municipal bonds from federal income tax. Later, they added restrictions on private activity of those funds. So generally, the federal government doesn't want what they call it indirect subsidy resulting from the issuance of tax exempt bonds to benefit people other than state and local governments. So again, why we talk again at the beginning, at the outset, to see what projects the county is thinking about, whether or not they would qualify for tax exemption. And then again, throughout the project, throughout the bond issue, if things change or if the expectations change, then we kind of work from there.
So this is part of why it's important, as the sheriff is contemplating a new building or a remodeled building, if he's thinking about sharing that space with another entity, we need to know upfront before we issue the bonds because we have to make sure that we're structuring the bonds in the correct way. And I have shared that information with the sheriff before he talks to some other entity to please let us know what he's thinking about.
But Training Commission is a government entity, isn't it?
They are a state agency, so they would probably be fine. But like if, if we were thinking about putting in an area for a coffee bar, that would probably be less than the 10%, but that would be a private entity. Whatever he's thinking, we need to know so that we can structure it correctly.
So I'll kind of get into it a little bit.
Can I get?
Okay, Commissioner Mckee.
A little bit more clarification, I apologize, on that piece. So when we do these bonds, they have to be like super specific, is what I'm hearing on? And if it's not in there, then there's no flexibility until what, the bond is paid off or can?
No, we, we can adjust as we go, as long as we remain within the limitations. Or, you know, we had the discussion at one point about one of our buildings that if we were, for example, the, the jail, if we were to share the jail with the federal government, which was conversation at one point, then we would need to ensure that that either fit within the 10% limit o, over the life of the bond. Or we could convert and pay penalties to do so. With my understanding, we could convert from tax exempt to taxable bonds, but that comes with a, a penalty. You, you want to avoid that if you can. So, you know, we can adjust as we go, but we want to know, at the time we issue the bonds, we should be issuing them with a project, a firm project in mind. Which is why we wouldn't issue them now and let the money sit in the bank until we figure it out.
Okay, can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'll go back to when we were talking about, I don't have to say we, like, I wasn't on the board yet. But when the new courthouse was being talked about, right? There was conversations of private-public partnerships and renting out space and all these different ideas. And I, I'm wondering, like, with that, is, you know, like, but that one was going to go to the voters. So maybe does that one have a couple of different strengths attached to it? Or is it still the same as a councilmatic?
Tax purpose wise, it would still be the same.
Okay.
Right, when we were talking about a levy lift, then that all did apply. But we, those are the very questions that we needed to work through before we went to the voters. We had worked through all of that. Is it a public-private partnership? What type of project would it be? We had talked about all those things and had direction from the board at the time we put that on the ballot.
One, one thing I would note is also that for any, for a project that is financed with both debt and cash or anything else, the non-debt piece is typically pretty, pretty clear, right?
Yeah, allocated to the private use portion, if there is a cafeteria or if, again, if the jail was financed with some taxes of bond proceeds and other things, that part that was private use could be considered financed by non-tax exempt debt.
Right. Complicated.
When you talk about private party or when you refer to governmental purpose, Robin, you made it sound like the federal government cannot be counted as governmental purpose?
Federal government is a private user, yeah.
That's correct.
Why, I guess I'd like to have a little.
We went through that. A lot of us have struggled with that.
Why is that?
Tax, it, federal tax rules.
So it's actually called out somewhere in the tax law that you're referring to?
Yeah, private users are.
Same as, so the army's not government, right?
Well, it's, it's, this is, non-taxable applies to state and local jurisdictions. Not, no nonprofits, no for-profit, no federal is the rule.
Like animal control, animal control might.
Jazzcom, we'd have to look at, we could make a case because it's composed 100% of local jurisdictions in a inter-local agreement. So we'd, we'd ask our bond counsel to review that.
And Capcom, for an example.
Capcom is considered government because the board is composed 100% of local government jurisdictions. You sit on their board now, Commissioner Fournier. No private entities on that board, fire districts, right? The cities, the county, so all government, all local government. But that's exactly the kind of thing that we have to look at each time, which again, it's important that we know, have a, a strong sense of what the project is at the time we issue the bonds.
And actually, to be fair, it's also after the bonds are issued too. So if, if again, the building, and it's kind of getting to the weeds, so sorry. If you change, you know, if the use of the building changes, then Robin would call us. We would discuss what changed and kind of go through it again and see what.
Actually, when it was that jail.
It did.
The old jail, I mean, it was way, way, way after its project started. And there was an idea, and then our use of it changed. And then there was an idea to make better efficient use of it, but they invoked this idea because the bonds weren't paid off.
That's right.
As long as the bonds are still outstanding, that financed, whatever that building is that is changing, has a change in use, then, so I think even with the jail, we.
Came up multiple times with the 3,400 building. And then when we allocated the land, a piece of that land to Quixote Village, we had to go through all these calculations to ensure that use by that nonprofit, which is not a government entity, would fit within the limitations of the bond that was used to pay for the property.
And then these tax expectations at the time of issuance of any bond issue is kind of outlined in a tax certificate. And so it's been Robin that's been signing those and laying out the expectations on, this is what the purpose of the bonds are. Are we reimbursing? Are we doing anything, using any additional funds to finance, if it's that building, that building? How quickly you expect, the county expects to spend the proceeds of the bonds, since there are also rules about how quickly you can spend the proceeds. It's called arbitrage rules. So there's kind of a lot that goes into, and we have many conversations about this as.
Hope has found out about arbitrage, yeah.
Hold on, there's, there's rules about how fast you can spend it? And there's other rules about like how much time you have to spend it?
Yes.
So typically, if you're going to issue taxes or bonds, you expect that you'll spend the proceeds within three years of the issuance of those bonds.
What happens if you don't?
And that happens. You just might have to take into consideration if there's any arbitrage or do we be arbitrage? or do rebate, arbitrage rebate calculations. So for the longest time, you weren't earning any interest on any investments, or at least not higher than your, the interest rate on your bonds. But in the last year.
Okay, so the bank, the bank that issued the bond has an expectation to earn some interest on that, on that money. And if you don't spend it within 10 years?
So arbitrage generally refers to the borrower, the local government, the county, borrowing money on a tax exempt basis, investing that money in taxable securities like treasuries and earning a higher rate of return on those taxable securities than it's paying to borrow money. And the the spread between that is the arbitrage. And a certain amount is allowable, but there are very prescribed rules about how much you can earn.
And for how long?
Yeah, for how long? The federal government doesn't want in in, like in the current interest rate environment, they don't want local governments going wild, issuing borrowing on a tax, a subsidized tax exempt basis with an indirect subsidy and then sticking that money in the treasury market and and earning the spread.
It cannot become a revenue source for the county, basically. We shouldn't, in in the way we earn interest on our funds and then scoop it up and spend it on whatever, we can't be just earning interest on debt proceed because we get a low interest rate and then we're earning more interest than we are paying out on the life of the bond.
Well, what happens, what happens if you do that?
You pay, you pay the IRS. It becomes a debt to the IRS that we would have to pay. And the county has a a contract for regular reviews of arbitrage compliance. We have to be able to demonstrate if if our bonds are ever reviewed, we have to be able to demonstrate that we were reviewing arbitrage to see if we owe the federal government. And my goal in the entire time I've been here is to not have to pay the federal government. So again, there's a.
My goal in life.
Right, there's spend down rules. If you meet certain milestones, then you're exempt from arbitrage. There's a lot that goes into this and the goal is to spend it all within three years.
If you do, if you do it, if you do it and you just send the checks to the federal government, is that, are you punished for even engaging in?
Oh, no, you.
It's all kosher so long as you as you pay what what treasury is owed.
Like like on Jeff's list of about 300 checks or whatever he made out recently, there was one in there for like $1,700 to the IRS. Might that been what that was for?
That was not for arbitrage, no, we do not. The county so far has not, at least in my time here, we have not had to make an arbitrage payment.
Considering every other pass through fund we deal with, I wouldn't have thought it would be too much if it was.
I don't, I don't.
I didn't know what it was and I didn't.
I don't know what it is, but I can tell you that it was not an arbitrage payment.
Stacy, you started to say it hasn't been an issue because interest rates have been so low until the last year essentially, right? But that's flipped.
Which you've been investing in, it hasn't been higher than certainly yield on the bonds.
Okay.
But the whole, you know, you'll hear me talk about timing. I, we don't want to just issue debt and have it sit in the bank. I'd much prefer to issue the debt about the time that construction starts and we're going to start seeing big amounts come due so that we can hit those spend out milestones. But that's ideal.
And I don't know if this is getting too much in the weeds, but it, there's also ways you can capture. So if you start spending money on the project you expect to spend, expect to finance with tax exempt bond proceeds, you can reimburse yourself for, you know, within certain timeframe, so.
And that's what we're talking about doing. So later this month, you'll see on your agenda, we're trying to set it up for February 20th, the reimbursement resolution. So that any costs that we incur right now, like design on the ballot processing center, could be captured. And when we issue the bond, which I would recommend to you not come until fall, we're able to use the debt proceed to cover all our costs throughout the year.
Because as you might expect, there's more tax rules around how much you can reimburse and how far you can go back to reimburse costs. And that's 60 days from when the governing body declares an official intent to reimburse from taxes on bond proceeds.
So we'll be able to go back to December 20th?
Something like that, right? And then the reimbursement resolution does not say that you are going to issue the bonds. It doesn't, it doesn't authorize issuance of the bonds. It authorizes the potential to reimburse yourself from taxes on bond proceeds should you approve a resolution, a bond resolution later.
It's permissive.
So lots of tax rules and why we are talking with Robin outside of bond issues as things come up. And like federal tax laws, there's also federal securities laws that govern issuance of taxes and bonds. The Securities and Exchange Commission Rule 10B5 is the law regarding employment of manipulative and deceptive devices. So in the sale of bonds, it's unlawful to defraud, make an untrue statement or omit to state a material fact that would be misleading or engage in any act that would be considered fraud. So and then in the public bond market, we prepare official statements. So that is a document that you use to market the bonds and that sets forth information concerning the terms of the bonds, the issuer, any financial and operating data concerning the issuer and other material information necessary for investors to evaluate whether or not they should invest in those bonds. And then issuers are primarily responsible for the content of their disclosure document, this official statement, and may be liable for misleading disclosure. It's not a chamber of commerce document, so we do need, you know, if it's good or bad, we have to put it in there if if you think it's material. Insider trading laws do apply to municipal securities. And also when issuers provide information that can be reasonably expected to be relied on by the market, so outside of this official statement, also must ensure that that information is also not misleading or inaccurate.
I I think a good example of that, I can't think of the exact town, but a few years ago, there was somewhere in the northeast, probably Pennsylvania or something, there was a mayor who talked, who had a press conference and talked a lot about, we're going bankrupt. And he was speaking in hyperbole, but there were a lot of concerns that what he was saying at a public event was, you know, investors should be able to rely on the statements of a public official. Anyway, that's, that's the warning.
And so again, like federal tax law, federal securities law, they are also, there are rules that require the county to continue doing things, providing ongoing disclosure on a particular website after the bonds are issued, throughout the life of the bonds. So again, talking with the county, if Robin has any questions, you know, she'd reach out to us. So again, we're kind of not constantly talking, but you know, throughout, whether or not the county is issuing a bond, we, there is communication. It doesn't end with the bonds.
We could spend all day on various regulatory and legal frameworks here, but we won't. And I'll be really brief here just because we've already touched on the proposed 2024 financing. Here are the preliminary stages of that. The proposed 2024 bonds would follow a similar pattern as the county's other financings, limited tax general obligation bonds authorized by the Board of County Commissioners, payable from existing resources, those resources being primarily the the newly authorized sales and use tax. This, this is a a high level calendar, subject to change, but identify some of the key steps in order to get to a bond sale and closing in the fall. As Robin mentioned, we've already discussed with finance, the finance committee on a preliminary basis and talked a bit about the reimbursement resolution that that Robin also mentioned that it sounds like the the board will be asked to consider later this month. The current timeline proposes a bond resolution going to the finance committee in April and then provided that the finance committee recommends that the board consider that, then they would go to court in May. And again, that would be that parameters resolution that authorizes the assistant county manager or treasurer to to issue the bonds within certain parameters. In the summer, we would work on the the preliminary official statement. That's that disclosure document that Stacy was talking about. That's that's that has to include all the material facts relative, relevant to an investor. We also apply for a credit rating from S and P. This, this is sort of what would, these are the steps that would set us in the timeline that would set us up for a September transaction. It's always easier to shift things back than to move them, than to move them up in these sorts of processes. So again, this could change, but this is, I think, where we stand currently and and what the board might expect.
As you can see, it's no small thing. The workload is a significant lift and and it takes a while to do. We can't just decide today that you'd like to go out with the bond next month. It's a little more work than that.
And that concludes the prepared sections. I have a market update if anyone wants to go into that, but I won't.
Well, I'm curious about how the bond rates compare to like, I mean, because our most recent one was a 5% interest rate. And that was a, whatever you said, 17, 18 months ago, so.
So, well, so so that, the 2022 bonds, it's a little confusing because they have a, they have 5% coupons. So those are, those are the nominal interest rates that are paid on the face value of the bonds. But the effective yield is actually a bit lower than that. And I think it was.
Yeah, I I thought it was in the high threes.
Yeah, I think it was in the high threes, going from memory here. But basically, the investors pay over, they pay a premium to to the issuer of the debt, to the borrower, because they want that 5% rate, even though the market isn't quite there. So they pay you a little bit more than the face value. So the county received more than $45.8 million in proceeds and so the effective rate is a little lower. That said, where we are relative, I only have a few slides in here, but we are, we're a little bit higher than we were throughout 2023. That yellow line is the yield curve, the AAA yield curve as of a couple of weeks ago. The red and green are a year ago and and the lowest point over the last 12 months. And so you can see we're about 40 or 50 basis points, so roughly half a percent higher really across the yield curve. That's again, just looking at the last really 13 months. This is where we look, this, there's a lot going on here. This is where we are relative to a 10 year, which actually even looks even worse because it includes those many years of super low rates for a variety of reasons. So we are, we're currently in a very flat yield curve environment. Short term rates and long term rates are more or less equivalent in some, in some parts of the yield curve. And we're certainly higher than we were, higher than the average, what we see in the last decade. If you go back further though, we're we're actually a little bit below average. If you look at like a 30 year window, which unfortunately we don't have in here. I'm sorry.
The, what's the issue around an inverted yield curve?
It's, it basically means if you borrow, if you borrowed money for two years, you might pay the same rate that you would pay if you borrowed money for 12 years. You'd pay more in interest because you'd be paying interest over a longer period of time, but the rate would be the same. This doesn't make that much of a difference for, for like a 20 or 25 or 30 year bond issue, which is what what a lot of governments do for long lived assets. But it's definitely, it's unusual. Sometimes it's, it it foretells a recession, that's the big concern. The market expectation is that provided the Federal Reserve does start to drop benchmark rates, you know, the Fed funds rate later this year, at the short end of the yield curve would start to fall. But the market does not expect long term rates to to follow suit. So the expectation, and again, this could be wrong, this is just what the market thinks, is that the yield curve will will go back to a normal shape later in 2024, but that shouldn't have that much of an impact on the county's cost of borrowing because you're really looking farther out. So I went a little beyond the question you asked, but.
No, that's, that's very interesting information.
Sometimes I can't tell myself.
So I would also add that Duncan and Stacy help us with more than just bonds. We we are in contact throughout the year, but they've done some extra analysis for us when we needed it, when we were contemplating the courthouse. Duncan and his team helped with projecting property tax and how close were we to the limits? And what, how much capacity could we have for, you know, best, best estimates at the time? Nancy had helped us when we were doing the levy lift for Medic One, doing the legal analysis of that and helping us estimate how much money we might bring in. So we can turn to them for more than just bonds. Anything in the area of finance, they've been able to assist us with. So and it's been a really wonderful partnership.
Is it the treasurer's office staff that like keeps track of all these payments and makes sure they're on track with all the different bond?
They actually make the payment, but our team does the tracking.
Any, that's it for you guys? Any other questions for our expert chair on the bond question?
No, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, sounds. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for coming down.
I, can I just add one? I think it would, I think it would be favorable for all elected officials to kind of get like the one on one on bonds, because I think it's, it's really important.
Thurston County elected officials you're talking about?
Yeah, uh, yeah, the county electeds, just so they know what the process is like, right? Of getting a bond and all the work that goes, that goes behind it as well. And all the questions that have to be asked. I know Auditor Hall is is familiar with this process, but you know, it's, I don't think it's as simple as, you know, when you first come in and you think it's just going in and signing something. There's a lot of hoops that we have to jump through and a lot of things that we have to do in order for, for something like this to go out.
So we could certainly invite Duncan and Stacy to come again and or do it over Zoom and do this if the other electeds are interested in attending.
This is recorded though, isn't it? They could watch this and this was a good piece of information. I think it'll help, if they watch this, they'd see some of their questions coming up. I don't know, meeting with them in a week or, coming up pretty quick. And it might cover some of those questions they had.
Sure. However you would like to arrange it.
Okay, let's, let's take a recess for 12 minutes before we pick up Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. It's 10:29, we'll come back at 10:41. Okay, it is 10:41. Right on its time, we are back. In our work session for February 7th, 2024, we're halfway through this morning's agenda. We're picking up with item three, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. CJ and Machado has joined us, our economic firm director. Who is taking the lead on this item?
Um, so I think everyone here is familiar with LTAC, but I'll do a quick recap. An RCW outlines funding for the lodging tax tourism promotion, and the LTAC Advisory Committee is required to have two representatives that represent businesses that collect lodging tax. Two members must be persons involved in activities authorized to be funded by lodging tax, and the fifth member must be an elected official of the county who serves as the committee chair. This year, we had Commissioner Fornier as that elected official. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meets a minimum of twice a year to review all applications for lodging tax, review and recommend a list of candidates and funding levels, which will then come to the Board of County Commissioners for final determination. For the 2024 cycle, you should have a printout that shows kind of a summary and overview of all the applicants who turned in their application on time this year. We had 24 applicants and a request of over $318,000. This year, for the 2024 cycle, we only had $150,000 available for distribution. LTAC met on January 22nd and 25th, and we. And we reviewed the applicants, and the LTAC committee made a recommendation for funding. At this cycle, I made an error and thought the Miss Washington and Miss Thurston applications were the same, and so I did not include the Miss Washington application in the original packet for committee review. During the LTAC meeting, I had recognized this error, and we had, thank you to Matt, printed copies of the application provided to each LTAC committee member. And so in the LTAC meeting, the committee took a moment to review the application and included that within their recommendation that you see before you. But in light of this error, the Miss Washington group has requested reconsideration for additional funding. I would note that the amount that LTAC recommended for funding was in line with the rest of the applicants. Who requested? Miss Washington Scholarship Organization?
Is that AMI?
Yeah. I should say Miss, Miss Washington. And so that is the scholarship organization. They requested $10,000. They were, LTAC recommended funding at $5,300, and as you see, the final recommendation of funding versus total requested amount for the applicants, many of them were at 50%, a little less, a little more. So I would say the final recommendation was in line with the rest of the applications. But that is a request that we received from Miss Washington Scholarship Organization. If the commissioners would like LTAC to reconsider, I would re, reconvene the group to have this discussion. Otherwise, I would be submitting an AIS for the commissioners to review and vote on the funding recommendation you have before you.
Commissioner Fornier?
Um, just kind of reading the room of the, the LTAC committee and the, the way that the, the Miss Washington application ended up getting in there at the end, I, I really think it benefited them. So while they may be not happy with what they ended up with, I, I, I'm pretty, I pretty strongly feel that they ended up getting more than they would have had they been submitted, had they been included, just the, the kind of based on the questions that came up regarding the Miss Washington, the Miss Thurston County pageant, and, you know, there was, there was some talk kind of questioning, you know, like, when the, when the goal is to bring in people from outside of Thurston County, a, a pageant that is focused on Thurston County residents, you know, there, and arguments can be made that that's not really what LTAC does. So the, both those organizations probably made, got more funding than they would have otherwise. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the recommendations as they stand.
Good to hear.
Can I ask some clarification on both Miss Washington and Miss Thurston County? And just, I'm, I'm just curious about them because I'm looking at the summary and I'm, is it for the local competition that they're asking that is going to be in Thurston County? Is it for the scholarships? What is it specifically that they're asking funding for?
So Miss Washington, I have a copy of that petition, but they are proposing the $10,000 would cover the North America Talk Digital Media Campaign and the Miss Washington Tourism Ambassador component of their budget. And the event itself, sorry. Tourism ambassador.
Because they're going to hold the event here in Thurston County. That's what generates the tourism. People will be coming from all over the state of Washington to attend the Miss Washington pageant here in Thurston County.
And so then how does that differ from, so is Miss Thurston County the local version of that?
So for the Miss Thurston County, that is the local competition for Miss Washington and Miss America programs, and so it is a different event.
But even for this event, they anticipate people traveling into Thurston. Their estimate is 120 paid lodging nights for people to come from outside of Thurston County here for this event.
And so they were both considered eligible applications. I, that was just fully my error, not recognizing that they were two different applications.
I have a couple of questions. For one, I don't understand the scoring sheet. How does, how does somebody get into the gray versus the white?
So the Lodging Tax Committee wanted to break up the applications of marketing versus festivals and events. It was just for their discussion. There was no functional.
Oh, but these are all being funded, the people that aren't being funded aren't on
Everybody who applied that was eligible, that submitted their application within the timeframe were recommended for funding.
Oh, you just reduced the amount to get to the.
Yeah, it's just a difference in amount. And so the Lodging Tax Committee decided that they wanted to fund everybody who was eligible, and.
Making the hard choices, huh?
Yeah, and, I mean, I, we have, I have not seen this amount of requests. Yeah, and I mean, I, we have, I have not seen this amount of, uh, requested funds versus what we have had before to distribute. And so they had some hard choices and a lot of people received fifty percent of their request, less. It was a hard year.
And then before, when we talked about this at a commissioner's check-in or something, there, I've never sat on this committee, so I don't really, and I think in the past, we didn't have that much more than what we had to give, so we didn't really have to think too much about it. It was pretty, so I'm just remembering a conversation where somebody was saying that the cities do this process and do we know how much the cities gave when we're, when they're asking the county and, and our, and then there was somebody saying that we should consolidate the process and work with the city, like what's all that? Where does all that stand?
So, yeah, in the application for two thousand and twenty-four, I added, um, a question about what other LTAC funding from other jurisdictions they have requested and if, uh, it had been funded or not. And so the LTAC committee was able to see that information and, um, integrate it into their discussion and decisions.
Can we sure Fournier? You were there, so...
So, so, yeah, so there, there, the other LTAC, uh, committee chairs have reached out to me and, and we were trying to have a meeting before the, the Port ED forum, but there, there is a, a larger discussion about how we can coordinate better. Uh, there was information provided during our process, uh, on some of the applicants, they had received funding from other, other agencies. But, uh, you know, we're, we're trying to talk about how we can coordinate better together. There has been some people that have talked about, like, yeah, having some kind of combined LTAC thing. I don't know if that's in the county's interest. Uh, Robin and I talked a little bit about it, but, uh, I mean, a, a, as that, as that contin, as that discussion continues, I'll, I'll bring information.
And Jenica also met with her counterparts in the cities, and maybe you can talk about that.
Yeah, we met, um, all the different jurisdictions and kind of, we put over our applications and took a look at what questions are being asked by who, um, and what questions may be on City of Olympia's that we don't ask, how our processes differ. Um, I'd say like a large dif- difference in process is City of Olympia uses software submittable, um, for theirs. And I think that's a considerable cost per year to use that software. Um, and then they also don't allow, um, discussion between applicants and the LTAC committee. That's something that our LTAC committee has, um, allowed in the last couple of years. And so, uh, there are differences, but I think that there are also some barriers to fully sync up to have the exact same process.
Would you say that they, that we allow that they don't allow?
Um, so applicants are invited as a public meeting, they're able to attend. Uh, our Lodging Tax Committee has allowed questions, like if they have a question about an application, uh, to ask the person if they're in the audience, or if they're not able to attend, I'm able to reach out to the applicant, uh, and ask for additional information. Um, I believe City of Olympia recently stopped allowing that. Um, and so it's just a difference in approach for the LTAC committees.
That doesn't seem like an insurmountable thing to figure out, but, um, can we sure Fournier, your hand still up?
My bad.
Okay. Can we sure me here, I'll get to it.
I was just wondering in terms of the funding, right? So there's, um, how much should we usually give, if you can remind me on that? Has it been a hundred every year or has it been less than that? I believe last year was a hundred, I don't know about the years before that. Last year is my first year doing LTAC.
It's been going up, there's been more money coming in.
Okay, so then we've... Well, and I think that there'll be opportunity to discuss additional funding sources for LTAC. Um, I think right now Thurston County does not collect the two percent special hotel motel tax that, um, City of Olympia and Lacey, uh, do, and so that's an opportunity.
Is it two percent or two dollars?
Two percent, I think the two dollars is TPA. What's the total fund balance for that fund?
Uh, we've got a, we've got a decent amount of fund balance. I think the most recent year's revenue was around, uh, a hundred thousand, but I'll just pull it up. But we're trying to spin the fund balance down, which is why you...
Raise it up to one fifty, yeah.
Yeah.
We've been over a hundred thousand dollars the last two years.
Yeah, and what we collect is nowhere close to what the cities pull in.
Oh, yeah, no.
Yes, they pull in a lot of money.
Even if you were to do something additional, it would still just...
Compared to the city's revenue? Okay, all right, well, um, so the proposal is to, for the board to adopt this chart as the...
Well, I believe I would be, if you'd like this to move forward and not send it back to the LTAC committee for reconsideration, um, I would submit an AIS and bring it to the board for a vote.
Right, and the decision not today?
No, I'm not making a decision, I'm just making, what are we doing, direction?
We'll put this on your pending decision on Monday on what you'd like to do. And there are two questions before you. First is, do you want to remand this to the committee to reconsider the Miss Washington? And the second is, uh, if you don't do that, um, does Jenica have a green light to put this on an AIS for final action?
I don't know, I kind of want to give Commissioner Fournier more meetings.
I'm all for giving it a green light, I don't think that anything would be changed sending it back to the LTAC committee. Cause the, the Miss Washington had, it, it was included in the process.
And it doesn't look like they got any less or anything than the other ones, they got, you know, relatively...
And, and like I said, I think they actually got more, the way that they kind of slid in there.
I am kind of curious, where are we at on that two percent difference?
So that is one of your revenue options, and Nicole will be bringing revenues to you again later this month, um, at your planning session to make some choices about what you would like to move forward with this year.
So we want to move this forward then?
Uh, to, this will move to a Monday decision spending. Um, so this is part of the structure of the new calendar is we are going to ask you to not make decisions at the three work session meetings. Um, that ensures that we are in compliance with state law that requires, uh, the ability for the public to comment on any action you may take. The law specifically says final action, but you've been getting a lot of feedback lately about any action at all. And the best way to go about this, um, to, to manage staff expectations and ensure that we are in compliance with the law is to have you not make a decision in the moment, but to put it on a pending decisions list for the Mondays.
So do we have to kick this thing to Monday about the RAP Act and whether we're gonna remove our support?
I think that the legislative items are a little different because of the speed at which state legislation moves. Um, and that is not, I, I know I'm splitting hairs here. I just think that that's not something that you would get public comment on, the board's position on a bill.
It doesn't generate a subsequent contract or agreement with a, there's no dollars.
It's not money that's being handed out. It's, it's, uh, but in this case, you're making a decision about how much money you're gonna hand out.
But only on Monday.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking, you know, if we could get into a, a rhythm on how things work, then I think you manage staff and public expectations.
Okay, so as far as LTAC, we'll take that up Monday.
Yep.
We'll move on, sounds like everything's been passed and vetted for today. And then, um, we'll go to Commissioner Items, and let's just go back to this RAP Act issues to start off with, to get that tied up, so to speak, and, um, part of this coalition, I think it would take a majority vote to, for the board to say we're, we're gonna pull ourselves out of the coalition. Is there support for that, uh, action?
Just so the board knows, I did reach out to Deborah, the only member of that coalition that has pulled their logo is the City of Olympia. She's not aware of anyone else at this point in time.
Okay. I, I'm all for kind of following Deborah's recommendation, so... I don't think she has a recommendation, she's all in chief. I want to know if that's a recommendation, but she's cautious, be, being cautious, okay? So, that's where I'm at. Commissioner Fournier, Commissioner Mihia?
Can we not make edits to the letter? Or ask for that amendment to the letter? I, I just feel, like if she's uncomfortable with the language of specifically calling Representative Fai, uh, I, I don't know why we can't just be like, um, you know, can the letter be edited? Just to keep relationships with our representatives in good terms? Can we amend the letter to say we are not in agreement and we don't accept any amendments at this time? I, I just don't see why the letter can't be edited instead of...
Well, I'm sure there's some kind of consultant that's put, for the coalition that's putting this together. We, it's not in our control, we could make that request.
I don't, well, I don't know why we can't make that request and just be like...
We can ask, um, it won't have an answer for you today, but, uh, I can bring it back next week.
I think, but I think we're splitting hairs. I, you know, I've just been sitting with it and I'm...
Commissioner Fournier, do you have a position on this?
No, I mean, I'm just trying to think, A, doesn't matter, and then two, I, I don't like backing down from a position like cowards.
Yep, I mean, that's a, that, that's kind of where I'm at, it's like, we support this legislation, like we don't know what legislator is gonna come out of the woodwork and try to change it, but I don't wanna, I, I don't know anything, I, I don't know enough about Representative Fai and his, um, power and influence to, to want to back down from a, from a position that I have on a good piece of legislation that, that I spent time learning about at the WASAC conference and is supported by every labor and environmental group that, um, that I tend to agree with on policy issues, so I'm rather just stay the course, but... So I, I'm not hearing support for...
There's two, at least two stay the courses, Commissioner Mihia, were you...
I, my concern is strictly the, he's on, he's on the Finance Committee and, and we're gonna, we've got a request in front of it. I'd rather, I would rather have him smile at us than frown at us.
He's gonna be frowning at a lot of people, if he's gonna take this personally.
Sure, but I don't know if they have any requests for major funding on a issue.
I think stay the course and see if we can amend the letter and kind of ease Deborah's concerns, right? And see if we can edit the language, at least on the letter, just to simply say like...
That's what Deborah actually said, she said they could have said, don't accept any amendment.
That's kind of why I'm saying like, use her language.
We would prefer that approach to the language, but we're not, we're pulled out of the coalition, that's what I'm hearing.
I, I will work with her and see if we can get that done.
Okay. What other Commissioner Items do we have?
I want to give an update about, I have two, if that's okay. Uh, first is, um, I got, uh, contacted by, uh, Mayor Joe DePinto about, uh, trail. Um, and so his staff came over and met with, uh, myself and, uh, Public Works Director Jennifer Walker. Um, and I thought they wanted to just kind of get into a similar ILA that we have with the City of Rainier or the City of Tenino. Uh, so I was very interested in maybe a, a, a piece in Yelm. And Commissioner Fournier, I see your hand up, is it about this?
Yeah, but after you're done.
Okay, and so, um, he, the approach that they were considering was actually taking ownership of that piece of trail, which let him know that for something like that, we just, the process would just have to be longer just because we have to see under what conditions we acquired the trail and, um, let him, um, spoke with Commissioner Fournier, uh, to talk with him kind of like about the benefits that the Ten, City of Tenino saw and just kind of getting into more of a just maintenance agreement with the county and, uh, seeing if that would be a, a good approach. Um, so Commissioner Fournier, I'll pass it on to you.
I, I just want to say that, uh, I'm having a meeting with all of the South County Mayors in about two weeks. And this is, you know, kind of the trail system and, you know, kind of just the philosophy behind how we could best interact is, is something that I intend to talk to Mayor DePinto about with, uh, the Mayor Rainier and the Mayor of Tenino there, so they can kind of give their, uh, perspective on, on, you know, how to, how to maximize all our benefits and work the best together. Cause I don't understand where Mayor DePinto is coming from, but I want to hear him out. But, uh, I, I just, I, I don't see why he would be advocating for this.
So it was, uh, what he relayed to both me and Director Walker was, it was in terms of, uh, they wanted to do some upgrades, uh, at a parking lot, I believe, and, um, just kind of, they thought maybe for accessibility of grants, uh, it would be easier for them to just have ownership of it since they would also have to hire a, a full-time staff person to kind of take over the maintenance of that piece of trail. Um, and so I know the, uh, so I, I think that would be a good conversation to kind of hear him out, um, so I look forward to hearing that. I just wanted to let the rest of the board know that this is a topic of conversation, that, uh, the City of Yelm has demonstrated some interest, um, and not sure which avenue they'll decide to approach, but it is, it is out there. Um, and then my second item was in terms of NACO, um, and seeing if there are any, um, any federal priorities that the commissioners have thought about, um, since that I could relay, well, I'm out.
Speaking to Congress people?
That's all my thoughts. And I spoke with Robin already and she has some items for me as well, so I just wanted to, if there's anything from other commissioners that I need to add to the list. Not hearing anything besides be processing.
How about if we come up with something here that we're just not thinking about right now and we just talk to you the next year or so or whatever? Cause we can do that now.
Yeah. I'm sure there's some PUSI sound related items, but I'd have to...
Do you have separate appointments set up?
I think so. Matt Taylor?
Cause I know that the, generally the historic, you know, the WA, any WASAC meeting is then that federal agenda from the associations. Doesn't always give you an opportunity to slip something in if you're...
Culvert replacement money maybe towards salmon, that's always a, a good one, to see if we can't, you know, get ninety percent. You know, we'll do ten, they do ninety or something, because it's to solve a, uh, more national problem than just Washington.
And I believe that is on the federal issues, our federal issues for WASAC as well.
How was it?
Commissioner Edwards, do you have a Commissioner Item?
No, I didn't really, I think we went over them the other day and I didn't, I didn't really much tell them with me.
I think I've covered mine in the last couple of sessions, um...
I appreciate the Commissioner Items section under each of our sections.
Commissioner Fournier, any thing you need to bring to the board's attention?
Uh, not this time, I just repeated myself from yesterday.
Yep. Okay. County managers, good to go? Good to go? Guess then we're at the end of the agenda and we're adjourned till two PM?
Two o'clock.
Yep.
Yep.